Staff, are we ready?
We are ready, Mayor.
Thank you very kindly. Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council regular scheduled meeting for September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven P M. The meeting has been called to or roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Everybody is here. Thank you very much. And if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance this evening, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to item number four, public comments for items that are not not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and our action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. If there's any members of the public that wish to speak on items not on the agenda, if you could please raise your hand, and I will ask for assistance if they can be brought into the room, please.
Okay, I will now be bringing in Sandra Perez Vargas. One moment, please. Okay, Sandra, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good evening. I'm calling on a couple items. First off, I'm calling about the cannabis dispensaries. Where many of us are very excited at the possibility of having them. There's going to be major benefits. If we get a cannabis dispensary downtown, we've seen the new store, therapy stores who's come downtown. They're getting a lot of attention, a lot of clientele. It looks beautiful. And we believe the same will be true of a dispensary that comes into downtown. It'll be beautiful and there's gonna, I'm sure it's gonna be very modern, like there's so many you see in San Francisco that look more like Apple stores. And there's so much fear about this for some people. So I would suggest anybody who is hesitant about getting on board that they go visit a couple dispensaries. Beautiful one is Lit in Pacifica. Another one is Flight in San Francisco. So go see what it's all about. And I have concerns, continue concerns about cars and vehicles blocking sidewalks. It's it's the same areas, the same people. We have a little gal in the downtown area who is Emma Walker. And she is forced to walk into the street constantly. Most of us have seen her who live here and it's just, I'm not sure what it takes for this to rise to a level kind of of alarm that our residents are being subjected into taking their safety into their own hands when they're walking down our streets. Another concern, and this just was glaring to me the other day, coming up on El Camino from Milbrae, the mediums on El Camino. Almost litter free. The second you cross into San Bruno, you see more litter than anything. It's really such a sad statement about our city. We're supposed to pride ourselves of being the city with a heart. And for me, a city with a heart would really prioritize clean streets. And we know the areas that are constantly littered south of Tanforan, underneath three eighty, the medium there, the bus stops. But before I cut off here, I do want to send a huge thank you to Elizabeth and Robert and Code Enforcement. And the time that they've been there, wow, what a difference in the response time, the follow up, and the real caring to understanding what residents are going through when we experience the dirtiness, the the lack of safety in some neighborhoods. So I I hope they get some recognition because in my opinion, I mean, and I've been here thirty years, they are really standout employees. And if you can duplicate them, go for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Lindsay Reich. Lindsay Reich, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Can you hear me all right? Okay. I I am, my name's Lindsay Reich. I'm the CEO of Warm Water Wellness, which is a nonprofit five oh one C three that I co-founded in in response to the Mickelson, the closure of the Mickelson Therapy Pool. We we advocate for warm water therapeutic resources on the peninsula. We reached out to your council a couple of months ago and my understanding is that the city of San Bruno does not pass resolutions. However, I'm here tonight to encourage you to authorize for your council or for the mayor to send a letter to Sutter Corporate supporting our cause. We currently, we have a considerable amount of support so far. A dozen cities have are on board, ten have passed resolution, nine have passed resolutions. The city of San Carlos did authorize for the mayor to send a letter to corporate tonight to cities have agendized. They have our cause on their agenda. The city of Mellow Park just issued a proclamation tonight, and the city of Belmont is voting on a resolution. We also have the support of the Sequoia Healthcare District, Samatelle County Central Labor Council, and the Samatelle County Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Canepa recently hosted a rally in front of the Mickelson Therapy Pool, and we had over a hundred. We had over a hundred activists show up, half a dozen local government officials. This is just such an important cause. I personally have gotten involved in this because my I was a user of the therapy pool. I have a chronic pain condition. I used it for over twenty years. My partner has a spinal cord injury. He was an able bodied man, marathon runner, fell down two stairs and found himself with a spinal cord injury. And any one of us can be one fall away from disability, and this facility was an invaluable resource for chronic pain management. My partner is now at the point where he can barely feed himself. He needs, he needs full time care, assistance with 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 most activities of daily living. And this is not, was not the case two years ago when the pool was open. It was such a valuable tool for him in his in his recovery, and he he was walking two years ago, and now he his quality of life has declined, and so many other members of our communities' quality of life has declined up and down the peninsula. This facility served, served thousands and could potentially serve thousands again. Sutter has received eight hundred and fifty-three million dollars from the CARES Federal Funds for the CARES Act for the purposes of not closing facilities during the pandemic. They're using COVID as a pretext to close this, and we would greatly appreciate your support. Would be happy to communicate with you directly and provide a sample, a sample letter that you could use. Thank you so much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Speaker is Tim O'Brien. Tim O'Brien, I will now be bringing you in. Tim, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. Couple of points I want to make today is regarding, first one is regarding dispensaries in our downtown, or I mean, in our city. But we voted on it and we we'd like to see it come to San Bruno and be operating soon. Like Sandra Perez Vargas said earlier, you know, they're amazing places. We've seen them in Pacifica, we've seen them in the city. South San Francisco has one, or they're doing cannabis delivery and everything, and you know, and it's, they're not that bad. I mean, I've visited one and and they're, and they're not. There's nothing wrong with them. I mean, it's, there's just like going to the pharmacy or something to get your prescription. It's, you know. So I'm I'm for it. I'd like to see it happen, and I hope the council moves forward with this dispensary dispensaries in San Bruno. Also like to bring to attention that a big shout out to Riley Gibbons for organizing the past few cleanups that we've been doing all year. That's well organized. And I'd like to see more people out there participating. You can follow it on San Bruno now. And I think other residents of San Bruno, I think as well, shows it. And the next one is September twenty-fourth. You can follow that on San Bruno now. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. You have a good evening as well. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Robert Barnett. Robert Barnett, whenever you're ready, you may begin. Robert Barnett, can you hear us? Mr. Barnett, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Mr. Mayor, members of council, two items to be brought up. One of them is in the despair of residential and commercial property. There is forms and stuff to be filled out by the public which are submitted to your departments. And it seems that the items or addresses that have been submitted over a month or so ago doesn't seem to have any movement for getting things to cleaned up, particularly the building on San Bruno Avenue. Number two is the, we're all familiar now with what's so-called e-bikes. Now they're getting up on the sidewalks, coming into people of foot traffic, getting in their way. Single wheel now ebook bikes out in the middle of the street, coming from side streets and getting into the traffic flow. I think at this time, possibly that this needs to be addressed specifically to employees of YouTube. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Wesley Lu. Wesley Lu, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hello, I'm Wesley, and just to be on the safe side, I wanted to give a quick disclaimer. I currently serve on the Samatelle Judicial Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission as well as the Youth Commission, but I'm not speaking in any official capacity. I I come to the meeting today to raise two issues that are particularly close to my heart. The first is I actually attended one of the July City Council meetings, and I raised two important issues. The first is having a restorative justice diversion program in the city of San Bruno. I mentioned this before, and from what I understand, it has not been addressed. So I hope that the city council will really take some time to sort of re, take a look at and reassess where our kids are being kept and where our kids are being sent to. And from what I understand, we're still sending our kids to North Peninsula Family Alternatives. And I encourage, I strongly encourage the city council to consider a restorative justice peer diversion program that actually boasts a four percent recidivism rate, a four percent statewide. So that's the first issue. The second issue is giving you the seat at the table. And I think that the city of San Bruno is now undergoing tremendous change, having big tech and biotech and all these major corporations being in the heart of the Bay Area. And there are many youth here. There are many young people here, and I think that it's time for San Bruno to really consider giving youth a seat at the table. And I think, Honorable Mayor, it's really important to ask yourself, how many high schoolers like myself actually come to these meetings? And I think it's very important to have your voice at this city council and in the city of San Bruno. So again, I strongly encourage the city council to establish something like a youth commission, something like a youth advisory board so that youth voices are heard. And obviously, youth cannot vote, but youth are some of the most civically engaged people. So that's something that really should be considered. Now, the main reason why I came to this meeting today is actually with regard to the San Bruno Library. Now, I I recently traveled to Europe, and in Europe, they have really fascinating library systems, and they have a great amount of literature available in many different languages. Now, when I come back, I visit the San Bruno Library, and it looks like it hasn't been renovated for like twenty years. And honestly, I I think that we need, the San Bruno people deserve better when we're considering funding this or approving dispensaries. And when we're considering talking about renovating facilities, I think we really need to consider where our heart is. And that is with our young people, and the library is the way where young people learn and young people engage. So I wanted the city council to really consider joining the Samatelle County Library System, not the peninsula library system, so that there's a greater connection and a greater funding available for the library system. Thank you so much.
Sorry. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Alexis Petru. Alexis Petru will now bring you in. Alexis, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, my name's Alexis Petru. I'm a San Bruno resident and a parent of two children who attend John Muir Elementary School. I see that you guys, the the contract for recology is up for renewal, and I was concerned to see that there's nothing in there about recology, giving money to our schools. They do provide, it says they're supposed to provide assistance for gardening, and they are supposed to provide educational workshops, which they have done at John Muir, I know. But I know they're a very civic minded company and very family oriented. I've worked with them professionally years ago, and I would think they would be amenable to donating money, plus all these other companies that we have in San Bruno, like YouTube, the Samit Foundation from Artichokes, the Welsh Foundation. They all highly donate to our schools, and I think it's time we ask recology, and I think they will be amenable to do their part as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Paul Wapinski. Paul Wapinski, whenever you're ready, you may begin. Paul Wapinski, would you please be unmute yourself? Paul Wapinski.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Sorry, I had a little technical issue. I've got two comments. One is if I want to mail something to the city council, I have to send five different emails on the city's website, and I think that it would be good to have a group email for the five of the city council members and maybe including the the city manager, so that we could have one group and send everything to one person or to one, one emails that goes off all the people instead of doing five different ones. My second issue is during public comments, the the mayor always says, you know, if there's something that's that needs to be referred to somebody, it'll be done, but we never hear about what happens. So I was going to recommend that on the website, you put a public comment follow up page so that people know that whether they're asking a question or requesting for action that we know that 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 at least it was addressed, whether you say we're not going to address it, whatever the question or you know, it costs too much money, whatever, at least there's some kind of action that would show that our concerns are being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Michelle Carranza. Michelle Carranza, whenever you're ready. One moment, please. I apologize, I'm unable to provide Michelle Carranza permission to speak. I'm receiving a Zoom error message. Let me go to the next person and see if we can try to figure this out. So the next speaker is Riley Gibbons. Riley Gibbons, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Good evening, council members and San Bruno residents that are currently tuned in to this council meeting. As we are all well aware, the city of San Bruno is moving forward with the discussion to open up a few cannabis storefronts in our city. Let's remember that two years ago, nearly sixty-five percent of San Bruno voters voted yes on allowing a potential up to ten percent tax on any cannabis sales within our city. What's surprising me is that so many people are shocked now that the city is moving forward with the potential task, tax. Now let me ask everyone that's listening here right now, what tax revenue are we supposed to create if there's nothing to tax? Security is not an issue. Potential crime is not an issue, according to local PD. Smelling concealment is not an issue, and children walking past two friendly armed security guards, receptionists, floor managers, and salesmen and women are definitely not going to be an issue. For the people that voted against cannabis, it was a fair vote that everyone was aware of. Because it passed does not mean you need to partake in any of these medical or recreational activities. You need to look at the bright side of the vote and really think about how much the city will benefit from the taxes and the boom in revenue for local businesses downtown. Cannabis will be the future. San Bruno is in a position to open up great opportunity for the city and its residents. Brilliant Game is putting a similar tax on their ballot this coming November, which technically gives a San Bruno a two-year head start from Brilliant Game. And if anyone is familiar with Brilliant Game like I am, we all know that they can be competitive. Nothing is stopping them from prioritizing cannabis and pushing it through before we do. So I speak for others when we say we look forward to the future of San Bruno. So please, moving forward, come check out our current dispensary, Flight, which is located at sixty-one Camden Drive in San Francisco. Come see how professional this industry really is, and I promise you will not regret it. If you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to me. And yes, like Tim O'Brien said, next cleanup will be Saturday, September twenty-fourth. We'll be having lunch and a little social event after, so please make it out. It'll be fun. Let's get together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's see if we can connect with Michelle, who will be our last speaker.
Okay, one moment. I'm trying to grant permission. I'm sorry, I am receiving the same error message. Michelle Carranza, if you could possibly email the city clerk's office with your comment, it would be greatly appreciated. The email address is cityclerk@sanbruno.ca.gov. Or if you prefer to call the office, the number is six five zero six one six seven one six zero. I apologize for the inconvenience. And I apologize, I lost track. Did Riley Gibbons speak?
Yes, that, yes, since we're not able with Michelle, then that was our last speaker, and yes, he did speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then there are no more speakers, no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you so very much. Now we will go move on to item number five, which are announcements and presentations. We have three items. The first one is item A, Issue Proclamation Declaring September fifteenth through October fifteen, twenty twenty-two, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of San Bruno. And I will read, this will be declaring again the September fifteenth to the August, October, excuse me, fifteenth. Whereas the city of San Bruno is a welcome and inclusive city dedicated to improving the quality of life for our community we serve, and whereas what began as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson in nineteen sixty-eight was expanded to a thirty-day period by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to observe Hispanic Heritage Month, and whereas the thirty-day period begins in September to coincide with the anniversary celebrations of colonial independence in Mexico and other Latin countries such as El Salvador, Guatemala, Costa Rica, Nicaragua, Honduras, and Chile. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to the North American as well as Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South American, and whereas the purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to celebrate and recognize the contributions of people of Hispanic heritage to American culture in roles such as civil rights leaders, community organizers, first responders, healthcare professionals, teachers, artists, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and more. Now therefore, I Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month and invite the community to educate and explore Hispanic culture, people, traditions, and values that have positively enriched our community through appropriate activities and ceremonies. And with that, we will move on. And I'm just wanting to say I'm getting a couple texts that saying the volume, quality of the council meeting is I've had three texts now. It's not best, but just wanted to give staff the heads up. We'll move on to item B, and this is issue a proclamation declaring September twenty twenty-two as Suicide Awareness Month in the city of San Bruno. And I see Taylor's here, so thank you. Whereas the city of San Bruno will join the county, state, and country in honoring suicide prevention month. Whereas in twenty twenty-one, fifty-four people died by suicide, which is and was a thirty-four percent decrease from the eighty-two in twenty twenty, San Mateo County. And whereas in twenty twenty, twelve thousand two hundred and ninety-seven contacts were received by the Samatelle County Star Vista Crisis Hotline. In July of twenty twenty-two, the Star Vista Crisis Hotline received a ten percent increase compared to July of twenty twenty-one, likely due to also rolling out a nine eight eight number, which was on July sixteenth. And whereas San Bruno residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other and preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate and reaching out to local twenty-four-seven resources, including our local San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis Hotline, which is six five zero five seven nine zero three five zero. That's six five zero five seven nine zero three five zero or the National, National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, which is nine eight eight, that's nine eight eight or one eight hundred two seven three talk, one eight hundred two seven three talk. And whereas residents can also play a role in suicide prevention by supporting local Suicide Prevention Month events, advocacy days and communications campaign across the city, county and state. The September twenty twenty-two Suicide Prevention Month theme is Take Action for Suicide Prevention, Thriving at All Ages. And whereas beyond September, San Bruno has joined the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative where mayors across the twenty cities and towns in San Mateo County have come together with the mission of promoting awareness of and access to mental health resources in their communities. And now therefore, I Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-two Suicide Prevention Month and calls upon everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. And we also have Taylor, which I'm very happy to have, who is a program manager of the Crisis Intervention and Suicide Prevention Hotline. And as I turn it over to her to accept the proclamation, I will tell you that as we mature in life, um unfortunately, as young, young folks, we've never had to deal with knowing somebody who has entered their life. And as you mature, unfortunately, you do that. And I know this coming Christmas evening will mark two years uh since I lost somebody uh dear to me. And so it is something that affects many people for many different reasons. But I really encourage all of us to do what we can. And with that, Taylor, thank you for being here and please, anything you would like to offer or say?
Thank you very much. Good evening, city mayor, council members, city managers, staff and residents of San Bruno. My name is Taylor Coots. I am a San Bruno resident myself, a San Mateo Suicide Prevention Committee member and the manager of Star Vista Suicide Prevention Hotline, which is your Suicide Prevention Hotline for San Mateo County. I want to thank the city council for the proclamation and thank you to the city of San Bruno for proclaiming twenty twenty-two September Suicide Prevention Month. Suicide Prevention Month is important to me because in the first month of nine eight eight, we saw a thirty-three percent increase in call volume. And as someone who has lived experience with suicidality and mental illness and as someone who is raising three beautiful teens through their trauma within the foster care system here in San Bruno, suicide prevention is for us just as much as it is for this community. Again, Suicide Prevention Month is here. Please join us in promoting this year's theme, Take Action for Suicide Prevention, Thriving at All Ages. There are many ways you can support Suicide Prevention Month. A few examples I have for you today include saving our San Mateo Star Vista Crisis Hotline. Again, that number is six five zero five seven nine zero three five zero or nine eight eight. If you have a six five oh area code, you can call nine eight eight and be routed to us. If you do not have a six five oh area code, I would recommend calling the local line to be routed to us. And you can also attend free or virtual, uh free virtual or in-person events hosted by us or community partners. An event I would like to highlight for you all is our twenty twenty-two Reimagining Mental Health Emergency Response in San Mateo County. It'll be on Monday, September twenty-six from seven to eight thirty PM. Event is offered as a panel discussion and will provide the community with opportunities to learn more about various programs such as Star Vista that provides crisis intervention and suicide prevention within our county. We have VHS attending, we have the CW CRT team and the cares team as well as Star Vista. This once-a-year event brings together vital mental health emergency response leaders in San Mateo County to provide information on their programs, talk about their approaches to services and share their larger vision for crisis services in the community. Um, I don't know if I'm able to put it in the chat. If not, I can uh email it to all, to you all, the registration link. Uh, if not, you can visit us at San Mateo Crisis uh on Instagram or our website. Thank you again for your time and for recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your comments and thank you for what you do. With that, uh enjoy the rest of your evening. And again, um thank you to everyone. And now we will move on to uh item C, please.
Be where the action is and get involved. Apply to serve on one of several citizen advisory commissions, boards and committees. Apply by Friday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two at five PM online at www.sanbruno.ca.gov or contact the city clerk's office at six five zero six one six seven zero six one. There are currently vacancies on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Citizens Crime Prevention Committee, Culture and Arts Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Youth Representative, must be a high school student and the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, that concludes announcements and presentations. We'll move on to item six, which is Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Are there any um members of, uh, Ms. Ernie, colleagues that wish to have an item removed for a separate, separate vote? Seeing none, are there any council members that would wish to uh have a comment or question on any of the consent items? Seeing and seeing none. Uh, before we go to a vote, I'll see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on consent calendar. That would be items A through G only under consent. I don't see any.
No hands are raised.
Thank you. With that is your action from council.
Through the mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the items on consent.
I'll second.
Motion Hamilton, second and Salazar, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Consent passes five oh. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to item number seven, which is the public hearing.
Seven A, hold public hearing and introduce, read by title only and waive further reading of an ordinance of the city of San Bruno approving the First Amendment to a Development Agreement between the city of San Bruno and Williams Portfolio sixteen for the construction of the Mills Park Center Residential and Commercial Development at six zero one through seven nine nine El Camino Real and the adjacent site at six zero one through six eleven El Camino Real. Sequo determination. It has been determined that the proposed amendments are within the scope of the prior project sequo documentation and exempt from sequo pursuant to sections one five one six eight Program EIR, one five one six two subsequent EIRs and negative declarations and one five one eight three projects consistent with a community planning or zoning. And section one five zero six one B three because it can be seen with certainty that the extension of the term of the agreement and other deadlines in the agreement have no possibility of having a significant effect on the environment.
Thank you for reading that. I appreciate it. Uh, before um I introduce staff, I'd like to call upon uh councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, due to the uh constraints of the uh Political Reform Act, I will be forced to recuse myself from this item uh due to the fact that my primary residence is within five hundred feet of the project and the project is likely to have a material financial impact on my property. So with that, I will be uh exiting the conversation and uh good luck to you guys. I'll see you after this, after this item.
Thank you, councilmember, for uh letting us know. And with that, I will now turn it over to City Hall for the Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Darcy Smith, the Assistant City Manager for the city of San Bruno. We are here tonight for the Mills Park Center Development Agreement Amendment, which is a public hearing. And I will be turning this over to Michael Loughlin. The city's planning and housing manager will make the staff presentation and city team will be available for questions later. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, this evening I will be providing uh a presentation regarding the uh request for an amendment to the Mills Park Development Agreements. Uh, tonight I'll be just going over uh the agenda item that's on your uh agenda for this evening. I'll be briefly going over the project location and description and um going over the development agreement itself. Uh, the amendment request that we received from the applicant, uh also the Planning Commission recommendation and the action that's recommended for this evening, uh concluding with questions. So uh this evening, uh we're requesting that you hold a public hearing and introduce and read by title only and waive a further reading of an ordinance that would approve uh what we're calling the First Amendment to the Development Agreement uh between the city of San Bruno and the Williams Portfolio sixteen for the Mills Center project. So why are we here? Uh, on June fifteenth, twenty twenty, uh this project was approved. It's a mixed-use residential project that included a rezoning action, planned development and a development agreement. Uh, this was a, a project that was in the city's pipeline uh for many years and as a result, um the uh development impact fees uh were not applicable to the project. So uh a development agreement was executed as an alternative uh with a ten-year term and it had several key requirements in the agreement. It uh required uh that the applicant applied for building permits for the first phase of the project uh to construct the project within two years uh at the date first submitting of the, of those permits is November third, twenty twenty. Uh, the development agreement is a total of uh ten million dollars in community benefits uh with the first payment uh starting with a one point five million dollars uh for the submittal of a permit for phase one. So to date, no permits have been submitted. In May of this year, we were, received a request from the developer uh to uh extend the terms of the development agreement for two years uh from ten years to twelve years. And um a city council action is required on this request uh prior to November third. So briefly, I'm gonna go over the project just so everyone's familiar with it. So this is the project site uh on El Camino Real and uh adjacent to San Bruno Avenue. It's a total of five point three acres. And uh phase one, or what's referred to in the development agreement as parcel A, is the northern portion adjacent to San Bruno Avenue. And then there's the southern portion uh closer to City Hall, which is space two or parcel B. So uh the project uh includes two mixed-use buildings ranging in height from five stories and divided into smaller uh components. And it, it would have a total of four hundred and twenty-seven condominium dwelling units, seven thousand nine hundred forty-seven square feet of ground floor commercial space and a total of six hundred and seventy-six parking spaces on two levels. So next I'll go, I'll talk about the development agreements, development agreement and the community benefits. Uh, so in this table, uh we have, I'm not gonna read all of this. Um, this just briefly summarizes the existing development agreement. I'll go into more detail with the extension request. Uh, but uh the development agreement starts with phase one parcel A uh November uh third, twenty twenty is the, twenty twenty-two is the initial date. And then from that date, uh there's a number of provisions in the development agreement uh that then cascade into uh the later phases of the project such as uh parcel B. And then finally concluding with uh the end of the the later portion of the development agreement, which talks about uh the final payments of six million dollars uh for uh that's related to parcel A. And then finally four million dollars related to uh parcel B with those payments being due in twenty twenty-five with uh options for extensions to twenty twenty-six. So uh the community benefits um that are included in the agreement included the ten million dollars uh for the city's general fund. Uh, one hundred thousand dollars uh in the agreement was to fund bicycle and pedestrian improvements in the general vicinity of the project on city streets uh that has been paid by the developer so far. And also um another hundred thousand dollars for parking enforcement and implementation of a residential permit parking program. So uh other items in the agreement that are uh not um related to finances um and, and and payments uh was an agreement to work in good faith with San Bruno City Net. Uh, a prohibition of short-term residential rentals in the project, uh city use of the group meeting room on the ground floor uh closest to City Hall uh in building B to be made available for uh city meetings and city events. And the agreement uh would also exclude residents from the projects to participate in a residential parking permit program if one was established in the adjacent neighborhood. It also um extended the term of affordability for the affordable units in the project to fifty-five years. Uh, there were additional commitments for affordable housing. Uh, a new traffic signal and pedestrian crossing at Kane's Avenue and El Camino Real at the developer expense. Uh modifications to Linden Avenue, uh which would include seventeen parking spaces, nine of which would be used for could be used for City Hall parking uh for events here. And then San Bruno Avenue would be widened with an extended eastbound turn lane at the developer's expense. So the um request that we received from the developer is for a two-year extension to the terms of the agreement as described in the letter. And uh with us tonight, we do have uh Justin Chu from uh GW Williams and Dan Engler, uh the attorney, um that are available to answer any questions that you might have regarding uh the reasons for the extension request. So um in staff review and the city attorney's review of the, the existing development agreement, uh we prepared uh the Development Agreement Amendment number one, which extends the term from ten, ten, ten years to twelve years. And it extends the time to submit a, a permit for parcel A uh from two to four years. Then it extends the time uh for parcel P um, which is keyed off of the parcel A timeframe. And then it extends the pay, the payment of public benefits by an additional two years. And also extends the condo application deadline from two years after final approval to four years. And there's an overall amendment to the life of the approvals. So going back to the chart that I started with um in my presentation, um in this chart, there's an added column, which is uh going from the existing agreement to the new timeframes in the agreement. Uh, you can see over in the far right-hand side that it would extend the time to submit the phase one building permit to November third of twenty twenty-four. Um, and then also uh there's an additional one-year extension if the developer pays one point five million dollars at that time. Um, if they are gonna submit between November of twenty twenty-four and November twenty twenty-five. And then so then again, uh from that, all of the dates essentially are extended two years. And that also for uh parcel B, um again, everything uh you know, commences uh or everything moves forward two years uh for the development of parcel B. And then finally, uh the overall uh term of ten years is extended to twenty thirty-two um from twenty thirty. And within that timeframe, uh the six million dollar payment for related to parcel A uh would need to be paid by uh originally from twenty twenty-six and that's extended to twenty twenty-eight. And then finally, the four million dollars uh for parcel B would be extended um as well to twenty twenty-eight. And those payments would then um And those payments would then um the total would always be ten million dollars. So if there's any uh prepayment of any of the uh the fees, uh those, you know, again, the developer would pay less at the end. So the total is always ten million dollars. And pl- plus the uh two one hundred thousand dollar uh payments. So the Planning Commission recommendation was to unanimously recommend to the City Council uh approval of this extension. And so uh tonight's recommendation that is that you introduce, read by title only, and wave for the reading of the ordinance approving the First Amendment amendment of the uh Development Agreement for the Mills Park Center Project. So next steps for this item are council questions on the presentation, uh public comment, council action to close the public hearing, council deliberations, and then the council action uh to introduce the ordinance or provide alternative direction to staff. So with that, we'll any questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions from colleagues in regards to the presentation, please? Seeing no hands, uh Councilmember Hamilton.
I just had one question regarding um just scrolling back up, hang on a second. Um it went fast. Thank you very much for the for the presentation. I had a question regarding um oh, where is it? Sorry, I lost my spot. One moment, please. I'm scrolling through the uh the presentation. And um it had to do with the fifty-five-year term for affordability for the affordable units. Fifty-five, when when does the fifty-five-year term begin? When the building opens, wh- at what point?
It would be from occupancy.
From occupancy. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from colleagues on the presentation? Not. It is a public hearing. This is the opportunity uh for public to please uh raise your virtual hand. If you wish to speak, this will be the opportunity that you do have. Once a public hearing is closed, we will not be going back uh to uh further public comment. So at this time, is there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Okay, the first speaker is Robert Barnett. Robert Barnett, I will now be letting you in. Robert, can you hear us?
Good afternoon, yes, Mayor, Councilmembers. Um it seems that GW has got other investments going on in other places in other cities. And I um would like to not see a constant uh extension of projects. If they don't have the funds to get this project going, I think the city needs to move forward with some other company. Um it's it's just my im- impression. And we know um that they've been busy and other cities buying up property. And I think that San Bruno just seems to be pushed to the wayside for more and more extensions down the road. And they, whenever they decide to get to this and finish the project and start the project, we don't even know if they're going to ask for more extensions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Uh next speaker, please.
There are no other hands raised.
Thank you very much. Again, last call. This is a public hearing. This will be the only opportunity for which any other members of the public wish to speak. Seeing no hands, I will be asking council uh to take action to close the public hearing, please.
Through through the mayor, before we do that, I I know that we received one um one email, public comment on this item um from uh Marsha Glasner. Um it's short. I'd be happy to read it just so that it comes that goes into the public hearing before we close it. Is that acceptable?
I I think it's fine, but obviously in future, if we had twenty-five, then you know, once we start with, but but there is one. It did come in late and it and and you're correct, council member, it is uh uh to the point. And so if you if you would be as please read.
Sure. So this is from resident Marsha Glasner. Honorable Mayor and members of City Council regarding Item Seven A. Exhibit A of the proposed amendment packet pages one eighteen to one twenty-eight and one thirty-nine to one forty-nine describes a project area in highly technical terms which require specialized training to understand. Most members of the public do not have such expertise. Please confirm that the northern section of White Way between Keynes Avenue and San Bruno Avenue will remain a city street or alley, which will be accessible to the public by vehicle for its entire length. Please include that information in the agreement in plain English. New state laws such as SB nine affect property which is zoned for single-family housing. Removing existing access to portions of those properties could negatively impact property owners' abilities to exercise their rights under these laws. Thank you, Marsha Glasner.
Thank you, council member. And now with that, I'd like to have action to close up public hearing, please.
Since my mic is off or is on, I'll go ahead and uh make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh motion, Councilmember Hamilton, second and Councilmember Medina, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Recused.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Hi.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Uh that uh passes four zero with one uh re- being recused. Uh with that, we're back to council for um further discussion and and our deliberation. Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to ask what the outreach to the public was for tonight's meeting.
Bring that to um member of the staff at City Hall, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we uh mailed, did a postcard bailing to a one hundred, one thousand-foot radius, which was larger than the original radius for the property. So we mailed postcards out for that, uh both for the Planning Commission meeting and for uh the meeting this evening.
Great to hear. Thank you. Um I also just wanted to ask um the representative from GW Williams. Um, Justin.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Justin. So um I had reached out and we hadn't, we haven't been able to connect, but I can just ask the question publicly, which is I what is, what is the plan for Mills Park? Um as you know, this particular development caused significant angst in the community. It was the largest development that had come to San Bruno in quite some time. Um it it was approved in a unanimous vote by this council, um minus one council member who just wasn't on the council yet at the time. Um but there's a lot of questions as to why so much uproar for a development that hasn't taken any action since that approval. So uh we'd like to hear directly from you on what what these, what the next steps are.
Yeah, that's fine. I can um answer that in two parts. Maybe just first give a little context to kind of what's been going on and then obviously that kind of leads into what the plan moving forward would be. So you know, since we got that project approved, we began moving forward, putting together the team, doing the design and engineering necessary. And we made it through the process and you know, we started to get uh bids back on on how much you know, on on the cost of the project, et cetera. And then obviously there were, you know, at this time in twenty twenty-one, there were uh you know, economic challenges that the pandemic presented that caused, you know, a feasibility issue here. And you know, you had cost escalations on the construction side. You had rents that weren't rebounding as quickly as other places just due to the slow return to work policies by some of the major employers. So between those two things, uh we, you know, it just, it just at the time was not a very feasible project for us to really undertake at that moment. Now, what we did do though is obviously, you know, we may, we wanted to get this done as, you know, we as we've said, we made efforts to find a JV partner and and we, you know, broadly marketed it. But there wasn't, you know, very similar to the issues we were running into. There wasn't much interest at that time. And at that point is when we realized that we were going to run into the the DA timeline issues. Um and that's why we, you know, approached and and spoke with with uh with council or sorry, uh with Jovan about just, you know, what can we do here to kind of help? And this is, you know, what's been going on and this is, you know, uh this is our question now. And so that brings us to now and now moving forward, we do plan to move forward with this project. It's just, again, the economic challenges did not make it feasible at the time and and now, you know, we we need to find a way to make this work uh as things stabilize here and and we, you know, have a couple avenues that we're thinking about. So.
So is that um when you say that um the economic um calculation, so we're seeing a lot of development up and down the peninsula right now. So is uh what what is making this particular development different than everything else we're seeing?
I think it's a little bit of the design, the design aspect of it. You know, we have uh you know, we have larger units, we have nicer amenities. Uh we we, you know, we have those types of elements that we brought to the table here. Um obviously, the union, the union labor as well as, you know, it's a, it's it's part of the the calculation here, the calculus on that. So you know, between all those things, though, I think that's really what's what's driving those those costs.
So then um what what is an anticipated um timeline? I mean, we saw a timeline for what the amended DA would look like, but what is a realistic timeline for a groundbreaking?
Uh groundbreaking is very hard to ascertain. That's that's, you know, we're kind of down the road on that and we really need to kind of start backwards first as as next year happen and starts and, you know, kind of where the price, cost of debt is, et cetera. We haven't planned it out that far yet, to be honest with you, but we are looking at next year, starting to revamp, you know, back to the signboard, continue the engineering, either find a partner, that kind of that that aspect, and then obviously get everything submitted uh at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh make sure that we address the questions and comments raised um during public comment. The the first there was the 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 comment from Mr. Barnett um regarding um requesting that the the city go with another um go with another firm. And um I I'll let, I'll let staff respond um more eloquently and professionally than I can, but you know, this is, this is a, this is private property. We do not own it. We do not have the 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 power to um to um compel another uh another company to uh take over this this project. Um but uh I'd like um staff to address that. And then um also um uh Ms. Glasner's um question regarding White Way, will it remain an open street? I believe the answer is yes, but staff can confirm that.
Okay, hold on, please. Um what I'd like to do is questions to the chair. And I'm gonna send uh them to the city manager for um the city manager to determine whom will answer that um and how. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Jovan Brogan, city manager, uh councilmember Hamilton, in regard uh to the questions you raised, which uh were also mentioned in public comment. Uh the first one, uh you answered uh exactly correctly. This is private property. The property owner has the uh exclusive responsibility uh or uh to uh develop this uh the site and choose their development partner. Uh and the city uh cannot compel a property owner to uh move forward uh with a development. Uh we have entitlement responsibility. Uh this project is fully entitled and we're here tonight to talk about extending that entitlement so that the property owner does have the option to move forward with that improved title. The next question was with regard to White Way. Uh it's important to note that there is a northern and a southern portion of White Way uh uh in regard to this project. Uh neither of those streets actually front single-family residential homes. Uh the northern portion of White Way uh on the western side uh does uh border the back of single-family homes. Uh it is important to note that that northern portion uh from Keynes to San Bruno Avenue uh is a city street and will remain a city street. It will remain a a way, it's sort of small alleyway uh accessible to the public. The southern portion of White Way um uh will uh the no longer be a city street and be a part of the development. And so the development would extend from El Camino Real to Linden on that uh southern side of the site. Parcel B, as it's referred to in the document.
Great. Thank you very much for clarifying those points.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, so just kind of roundabout this uh question, just going back to staff. Um I just really want to highlight um again, that this particular project really did divide our small community. Um and once approved, there was really significant anticipation for this development to move forward. Um I've been disappointed to see it not move forward. Um in fact, to just kind of have this before us tonight with no anticipated date or start date or submission date, um kind of leaves me wondering uh what the next steps are. So as we are here now in a housing crisis, uh what assurances are being provided through this action that this development will be built with the action taken tonight?
I'll have that. Again, I will be directing questions through me to the city manager on that, please. And he can determine.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. Uh Vice Mayor Mason, uh that that is a um multi-part question, uh but I think toward the la- the latter part, what assurances is the is the city council being provided that the development will move forward? Um I think you heard from the developer that uh the the site is currently financially uh not feasible to develop uh based on their calculations, but they did say that they were uh committed to still moving forward uh and wanted to seek this extension of the uh development agreement timelines. You know, stepping up on the balcony, I would say uh you're getting the same assurances here that you get anytime you take an entitlement action. Uh the city council uh makes an entitlement action to uh approve a project, uh but uh the property owner and the developer uh are the ones investing private funds uh uh or non-city funds in that project and they move forward uh based on their timeline and market conditions. So I would say that this extension is actually not distinctly different from your prior action uh to approve a project nor different from any other action that uh councils uh take to uh approve projects. Uh you authorize them and then the property owner and developers move forward uh based on their timelines.
And can you talk a little bit about the detriment to the city and not moving this forward tonight?
That is a sure. Uh but let me stand up. Sometimes I feel I get better responses when I'm thinking on my feet. Um that's a very broad question. Uh I will uh respond uh in a few ways. One, uh we all know we're in a housing crisis and housing uh is certainly important to the city council. Uh and uh building housing uh uh in in our city and in our region is extremely important. We all know that. Uh I think the best way to ensure that housing is built on this site is to actually have an entitled project on the site. And that's what you're being asked to do is to extend the entitlements by two years. And so um certainly there's a property owner slash developer that has stated their interest in building the project uh and having a approved project that they can build, or should they choose to sell and have someone else build? Uh is in the best interest of having housing developed. And so for that reason, I think it is uh important uh to extend uh the uh development agreement by two years as requested, uh and that is uh the developer's request and staff's recommendation. Uh also important to note, I think the developer mentioned uh that these are larger units um uh and um the design of the project uh is was actually, I think candidly stated curated to be uh uh less intrusive and intensive on the neighborhood. This project uh is providing significant parking, more parking than I think we're seeing in uh other projects. Uh it it also has setbacks and step backs from the single-family homes on Linden Ave. Uh and I I do know in the conversations in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, uh there were, or twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, actually nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, there were conversations uh amongst the council and the community of not having a solid five-story building there. Uh and so the building does undulate uh in in heights uh so that it is not five stories on 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 the west side facing the single-family homes. Uh it's also important to note that uh should this project not be entitled, um uh it potentially is more likely that a reentitlement of the site uh would not have those same features and someone uh may take advantage of of uh state law and uh propose a higher uh project that is more dense. Uh and so uh I do think that this project uh had significant public input and significant um um uh conversation and suggestions from the city council and uh extending it, uh should the city uh continue to um uh want housing on this site, which I I I I believe is a yes, uh is important to do. And so that's why it is recommended by staff.
Thank you. That, that is one of the questions that, that I've received. I don't know about the rest of the council, but, uh, it was why, why allow it to move forward if nothing's been built so far? So thank you for answering that question.
Plus, I think also, um, you know, there is, uh. There's, uh, something that expires, you know, and government requires readings and all of those things. So that's another reason this before is in the planning commission did approve it as well. Is there any other questions from colleagues? Last check, okay. Final, uh, question or comments, uh, Councilman Medina?
Yeah, just a, a very short comment. Um, I'm in favor of this extension. City councils approve entitlements. The developer builds it. So, understanding the circumstances. Um, that's why I'm in favor of this, uh, extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, seeing no other hands, no other comments, uh, there, I, and city attorney will assist me, um, should I stumble a little? But, um, there are two actions. First action would be if. To introduce and read by title only and wait for the reading of an ordinance. Um, uh, that would be the first action by council if council is in favor of.
So moved. Second, does that work?
There are second. Yes. Why, yeah. Councilmember, uh, motion made by Hamilton, um, seconded by Marty Medina, um, to, um, uh, roll call, please. Sorry.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar is recused. Vice Mayor Mason?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Uh, passes, uh, four zero with one, uh, Salazar being recused. Uh, the second action item would be the city of San Bruno approving the first amendment to the development agreement between the city of San Bruno. And Williams Portfolio sixteen for the construction of the Mills Park Center. That would be the next action of council, which is that go forward. Councilmember Medina?
So moved. All second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Medina, seconded by Councilmember Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar is recused. Vice Mayor Mason?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Passes, uh, four zero with Salazar being recused. Uh, staff, I think, uh, I just want to verify that we have, uh, met all needs and requirements under this public hearing and action by council.
Mayor Medina, that is correct.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to comments from council members. First will be item A, which will be kind of a joint effort, uh, receive report from voting delegate. Um, on the attendance at the annual League of California Cities Conference held in Long Beach, California on September seventh through the ninth of twenty twenty-two. And I will, uh, first turn it over to Councilmember Hamilton. Prime, uh, prior to that, I would like to thank him for his attendance. And I will tell you, to my knowledge, it is the maybe first time San Bruno has seen two, um, council members. At the conference, and I'm sorry, welcome back, uh, Councilmember Salazar. Um, and Councilmember Hamilton was kind enough when I asked, could you be so kind as to be the voting delegate? He said, not a problem. So, which mean he needed to stay, uh, longer and, and vote, and I appreciate that. So with that, we'll start with you, Mr. Hamilton.
All right, um, it, I really enjoyed this conference. It was great. Um, I, I have a, um. I think we all know that my report out will not be brief about, I'm making it as brief as possible. Um, cause, uh, I took, uh, furious notes for, for, uh, several days and, uh, just learned a ton. Um, but I'm trying to report back on stuff that is, uh, that is relevant to all of us and not just my own curiosity. So, um, but first of all, uh, there was, um, uh, discussion during the AB one, two, three, four training, which is mandatory for all of us. But, uh, but it's, uh, given in person during this conference. And it yielded a few process improvements that we can implement. I have already shared these with the city manager's office and I will bring up several of these. Um, during our policies and procedures, uh, meeting, which, uh, is, it's going to happen tomorrow. So, um, I'll save the, the details on that for that, that meeting. Um, as, as, uh, anyone would be able to guess, there were many sessions on housing. Housing was top of mind for most of the attendees I spoke with at the conference. Um, it was interesting to hear about, uh, upcoming projects from, you know, from many cities across the state. Um, particularly, uh, in, in one session, we're focused on El Cerrito. Um, El Cerrito seems very, very similar to us. They implemented a transit corridor plan around the same time that we did. They're looking to add, add housing near their Bard Station. Um, they have a lot more available land than we do, so they're a little bit luckier in that regard. But, um, it was, uh, it was really interesting to see their, um, their approach. Um, I attended a session on promoting civic debate, which included a discussion on appropriate response to protests in the community. And I was pleased to see that all of the best practices that were shared during that session. Were practices that the San Bruno Police Department already implements. And which we as a community saw in action during events in San Bruno during the summer of twenty twenty. So that was, uh, and we feel very good. Learned about various grants, including, uh, grant opportunities, including an interesting tactic taken by the city of Santa Clarita. To leverage MTA funds to extend their fiber network. Um, I also learned about grants available from the California Energy Commission. Which can provide up to two million dollars for affordable housing projects if those projects are built as all-electric. And I've shared this, all this information with the city manager's office. And then, uh, lastly, I was the voting delegate for San Bruno, as the mayor just mentioned, for the league members' general assembly. Uh, we first approved some minor bylaw changes, which, and with a nearly unanimous vote of the hundreds of members present. Um, there was then a proposal to, for the league to advance and help qualify the brand Mendoza-Candell initiative. For the twenty twenty-four election. Um, this initiative seeks to restore all local control over planning and land use decisions to local governments. And would invalidate the majority of the housing laws that have been passed in recent years by the state. Um, the league's resolution committee voted before the assembly session to recommend. Sending this item to the league housing committee for further study. Um, from my own perspective, while I'm not a fan of many of the state laws around housing that have been passed recently. I'm also not convinced that the solution is to remove all state control and allow communities to summarily decide, uh, deny much-needed housing. Which is why I, um, supported along with the majority of the assembly to, uh, send the proposal for further study. And so that's what happened there. Um, overall, it was an extremely rewarding experience. Um, every moment between session was another, uh, was another opportunity to. Meet a new colleague from another city and it really drove home how similar all of our problems are across the state. And, uh, I, uh, thank my, my colleagues for allowing me to attack. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Hamilton. I think you did a great job and particularly, and there were some general sessions. That we attended. There's also, uh, they called the Peninsula Division. We are in the Peninsula Division. There was also a meeting. Every division has their meeting. Throughout this, uh, week, ours just happens to be at like seven AM, um, in the morning, so, um, which we're still understanding, but I guess that's historical. Um, some of the conference sessions that I attended was, um, as, uh, Councilmember Hamilton, understanding public service ethics, laws and principles. And we made it through the two-hour class and I think we passed. We got our certificates. Um, how to stay out of trouble, avoiding council chaos was another one. Cannabis and economic development. Calpers continuing, uh, in the path to sustainable pensions. Dealing with deferred maintenance. Um, lessons learned from the most destructive fires in California history. And on-street dining risks, tensions between safety and supporting businesses. But, uh, what was interesting is on the, the fires, it was more of Santa Rosa. But it was also Paradise and obviously, um, from someone who's, you know, has sifted through the ashes of, of the home up there for my mother. Um, met the Paradise mayor currently, who was on the council, had just gotten elected when he was on the council at that time. And to, you know, coming up on their fourth year. So it was a very, with us making, that was Thursday, our twelve years on Friday and. Having an open discussion and dialogue with him of how they're, um, uh, rebounding and going forward. And he gave me an open invitation and his number to come up there again because he's proud of how far they've come. In four years and, and, and that, um, a- as Councilmember Hamilton said, it's also an opportunity. To really talk with people and I mean, some of the cities, the Antioch, I spoke to that, the, the mayor, because he was also one of the speakers. In the, uh, cannabis and economic development, uh, Brisbane, Burlingame, Campbell, Colmore, Daly City, Hillsborough, Millbrae, Pacifica, Fontana. Foster City, Redwood City, San Ramon, South San Francisco, those were some of the, uh, folks that, uh, I had separate meetings with. Spoke to, um, in regards to a variety of stuff that affects, uh, us here and outside our county. And there were others that we met in, in our travel. Also had a great opportunity to talk, have a meeting with the county manager for San Mateo. On emergency services and our concerns for going forward, uh, meeting with the chair of the ambulance, which is the ALS, JPA and members who. Invitation. So it really does have us there in order to engage. Um, and in the end, as Tom, Councilmember Hamilton said, we experience a lot of the same things. And it's just a matter of to what level and what maybe they have done that we can learn from, not reinvent the wheel and vice versa. So, uh, the only thing I will say, and I think Councilmember Hamilton, maybe the city manager, assistant city manager will agree, it was hot. And I know it was hot here at home, but it was also very humid too. So, uh, I got my steps in, but at the same time, the, the, the heat was, uh, a little much. It was nice to come home. So with that, again, I want to thank Councilmember Hamilton again for his attendance and willingness, uh, to be the voting delegate. Thank you. With that, we will move on to item B, um, with, uh, Vice Mayor Mason. And we have four items. The first item is discuss, uh, directing staff to schedule an in-person town hall style meeting. In October of twenty twenty-two with a focus on development projects, including the timeline for the Recreation Aquatic Center for the San Bruno community. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. So, um, thank you for entertaining this thought. Um, I think most council members have supported a town hall style meetings. Um, and I think we've all talked about different topics, either, um, publicly or, you know, just amongst, amongst ourselves. Um, with most, um, agencies now starting to move back to in-person if they haven't already. It would really be great to have a town hall style meeting that focus is on development. Um, especially provided the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two San Mateo Daily Journal article. That was entitled San Bruno Developments Fail to Take Shape. Um, what the article fails to say is that every development that is listed in that article has actually been approved. Um, and is essentially, you know, not, not a holdup, um, by the council or by any voting body here in San Bruno. And so I think it's important that the public actually understand where these developments are. The, the rack was one that I provided in the, as an example. And that was specifically because it's visible. It's right now, you can't really get around San Bruno without, um, not cutting through the park because of the detour. Um, and so it, it, it's probably the most visible project we have right now, um, outside of Allen. And even though Allen is a school, this is a district property, it's also still a development. So, um, the suggestion really is to have a town hall style meeting, not to go into depth with any of the developments, but really to provide a list similar to what was available on the website. Of all the different development projects that San Bruno is looking at, maybe five to ten minutes on each project, where they are. And then allow at the end of the conversation to, um, have questions by members of the public. Um, I do think that the article was surprising to some residents, especially because there are developments in there that people did not know about. And really unless you're going through the website on a fishing expedition, you're not just going to find all of these developments. So, um, it's really intended to be informative. It is not intended to cost staff a whole lot of time since all the developments are actually already on our website. There are also, many of them are listed in the San Mateo Daily Journal article. Um, but really as an opportunity for us to engage the public with what is happening in San Bruno, um, as it pertains to development. So, um, if October is a busy month, I think November is fine, um, as things are slowing down because of the holidays. Um, but I do think it should happen this year. So, that is my proposal.
Uh, question or co- questions or comments from colleagues? Uh, Councilman Medina?
Yes, thank you and thank you, Vice Mayor Mason. I, I think the question then is for staff of how much time this would take? Just to get an idea of, um, this request. I'd like to hear from staff. I, 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 my first reaction is to, to be in favor of it. I also agree that the Daily Journal article, didn't make it absolutely clear that. City councils approve and entitle projects. It's up to the developer to build them. So, that's my question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Uh, I, I think if we turn it to, to staff for that, that question, I think I would also like to encapsulate. You know, I think sometime in October, and staff can correct me, there is about Tan Fran. And that's starting to come back to us. Well, as you know, that's, that's a big topic on everyone's mind. So. If that's already coming to us and that, I don't know that October is the right month because I think. That's going to be where it's at and if that's upcoming. So, uh, but I think the question is maybe the time devotion that it would take. Um, I know we could say it's on the website, but again, it's preparation, it's meeting, it's organizing, it's advertising. Um, and then is, uh, city hall or, uh, um, city manager, is that something that you're able to somewhat respond to those couple things? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, uh, uh, Councilmember Mason, uh, in regard to, uh, your request. Um, you know, I, I think it's important to note that, uh, we are having policies and procedures conversations with the city council and. Uh, part of your draft policies and procedures is that, uh, um. Staff, uh, will take back an item, uh, and then return to council at a later date. And I really want to, uh, elect that versus speaking. Just offhand with, with, uh, not being able to prepare, talk to staff with regard to this item about exactly how long, uh, it will take and what it will. Um, um, uh, take to put it together. I, I don't want to state a number of hours. Um, certainly, um, we are absolutely in favor of, uh. Having town halls and educating and working, uh, with the community, uh, the right time to have that, whether it's October or later. Uh, I would really need to talk to staff, uh, and in addition, as council knows, our community and economic development director position is currently vacant. We will be recruiting for that position. And so I totally understand that there's a desire to have it this year. Uh, it's also the, the type of thing that would be nice, uh, for a new developer, uh, for a new department head to attend as well. Uh, and so let us go back and, um, uh, understand, uh, the desire to have a town hall and. I'll return to the city council with, uh, some more, um, thorough thoughts on, um, uh, when, uh, it can be put together and. Um, the outline of that and, uh, the time and capacity that it will take to put on.
Thank you. Fair. It's always best, as you indicated, not to just. Throw something out rather than having that opportunity to go and be thoughtful about it. Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, just before we move on from this item, I just want to, uh, I just want to go, go on the record. I'm in favor of, of doing this. I do think that, um, waiting until after, um. We have our initial meetings about Tan Fran, so that Tan Fran can be included, um, as one of the developments, um, is, is, it would be a good idea. And that would, and that would also give, um, staff some more time to prepare for it. Um, so, uh, just wanted to, um, state my, uh. My support for this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just, um, would we, would we receive the response from staff at the next meeting?
I would also say, just to give my thoughts is that, um, I think nobody, I mean, I think everybody, including staff, city managers and. Everything's good with town halls. It's, it's directed and it's organized and, and it has the best, uh, information for folks. So I don't know that, uh, off the top of my cuff, I would say October seems too soon. It's like thirty days. Did, did do it right and, um, the Tan Fran and other elements. And as you mentioned, the. The director is not in place yet either. So, uh, but anyway, that's my input. And then the question was, um, city manager. Any ETA? And I, and I know, I don't want to put you on the spot because you're saying, okay, you're asking me again, the same question is like, well, when? I need to talk to staff. I need to see what's going on.
Certainly, uh, I think I want to, uh, recall back to our draft policies and procedures because I think. When we had this discussion, I believe those draft policy procedures says that staff may return, uh, uh, by the next two meetings, just to give some time. Uh, and so I think, um, it might be possible to do it by the next meeting, but again, I'd like to, um. Uh, in, unless this is an urgent matter that, that, that council really wants to direct staff to come back by, by the next meeting, um, you know, we. We can certainly do that. Uh, it would just push this item up a little ahead of other things. The way we work, your meetings are every two weeks. And so the staff report, uh, would be due internally by the end of next week. And so, uh, it, it would be a little bit of a fire drill to, to work with staff and. Uh, plan it all out within the next couple of days so we can meet our internal deadlines to, uh, publish a report and get it back to you. Um, but. Uh, if it is an urgent item, that council would like, um, uh, return back at the very next meeting. We can certainly do that. I know when we. uh, if it is an urgent item that council would like, um, uh, return back at the very next meeting, we can certainly do that. I know when we talked about council comments and staff coming back with a thoughtful response, uh, we talked about giving, uh, staff, uh, one to two meetings to come back. So I, I, I would suggest we, uh, stick with that, um, unless this is again, an urgent item that council would like to direct, um, that we, uh, absolutely come back at the next meeting.
Go personally for me, uh, if that's what has been asked by staff and we kind of have had that underlying thought process, then I, I'd say that the timeline that City Manager outlined is fine with myself. Anybody else? Uh, Councilmember Salazar, then Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah. No, I, I, I agree that, you know, if we, if we do take this on, that we should allow staff enough time to develop something. And, uh, something else that I would, um, just offers a suggestion is that, you know, perhaps talking about development in general is not necessarily, um, a, a very gripping topic for the vast majority. And, and I know that we, we've done town halls before and been very successful and, and, uh, providing, you know, some, you know, really good information to people that are really interested, but it's, it's generally been focused around a very specific topic. So when we discussed parking, uh, people that were very interested in parking had an, uh, an opportunity to come and, and speak on that. Uh, it was very well planned out. There was a lot of lead time, uh, the, um, announcements, uh, were distributed broadly. When we were talking about grade separations, again, we had really good turnout on those. And, and I think that when people are very interested in something that affects them personally, they will turn out for it. But if it's, um, uh, quite frankly, you know, if we're, we're only gonna talk about development, there's not that much that we can say that's very exciting or compelling to people. And that's partly why that article went out. It's because things are kind of stagnant on that front. And if we are to spend, you know, five, 10 minutes telling people, here's a project that's been on the books for two years and, uh, nothing's happening because of the economy or because of funding or, you know, whatever the reason, that's not very interesting in, in my opinion. And so that may not be a, um, a crowd pleaser or something that's actually gonna get people to come out and, and listen. So, uh, you know, I think content is very important and, and talking about this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mason?
Yeah, I just wanted to say for our context, this was actually submitted back in August, um, and it, um, it was dismissed for whatever reason. It wasn't placed on the agenda for the last two meetings. Um, so I think it would be fine if it went past October. Um, but I do think that it's important that people know what, what is actually being thought of, what, you know, what these ideas are for these locations. And let the attendance tell whether it's of interest or not. I was actually at the parking meeting. Um, and I don't know that a whole lot has changed since that meeting as far as like the complaints we get about parking. So, um, so I think that just people knowing what, what is happening, whether something's been submitted or not submitted, uh, what designs, uh, are being thought of. I think people want to know what's going on in the neighborhoods. And in the time I've been on the council, there hasn't been any, uh, in-person or virtual town hall style meetings. So it would be great to see that, um, given the, the, in light of this article, but also I think the article has really expressed, um, concerns and raised questions that many in the community maybe didn't have before they saw this. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, and I, I would say that while, you know, development isn't the sexiest topic, um, around. Um, I think more and more, uh, uh, based on all the conversations that I have with residents and just, just in general, the, with the, with the, um, with the housing crisis. Um, how, you know, housing, uh, uh, development, especially development for, for housing is, um, something that's, that people are increasingly realize affects everyone. And, um, so I, I, I do think that it would, that this is an appropriate topic to have at this time. Um, to, uh, to continue with and, you know, then we can use it as a blueprint for future town halls on perhaps sexier subjects.
And I was gonna say on the, uh, construction, I'm sorry, the Aquatic Center, Recreation Aquatic Center, I mean, there are, it's a committee that meets. I think it's meets next week. Um, and it goes to the Planning Commission, Park and Rec, Community Foundation, City Council, there's a separate meeting. Uh, there's, I think that has been communicated very effectively and people can see and they know the roads are closed. So, um, uh, but I think it's fine. Everybody is saying that, but I mean, I, what I haven't heard, I've heard from two, is that yes, allow staff what, uh, the city manager had indicated for time coming back. Okay, so I, I, I have a third. I get, yes. Okay, okay. So thank you very much. Let's, if we can, we'll move on to item two, request discuss, sorry.
Sorry, Mayor Medina, can we do, can we do a motion for roll call vote on that, please?
We could do a motion on anything. I had, everybody gave me a thumbs up, but you want to hear their voices, then, but, but, but with the, uh, hold on, with the caveat of allowing the city manager the time that he's asked to report back. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page on that one because that was the question.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Somebody should make a motion then.
So I'm, I, I'll make a motion to, um, to have staff get back to us on, um, the amount of time it would take to plan a town hall style meeting with the topic being development.
Second.
I'm gonna vote no on that, um, on the question because it's not answering the question and we don't need a motion. It's not a point of order. So we haven't gone out, out of our way on anything. Um, what the city manager was asking was is it an urgent matter that rises that it needs to be at the next meeting or can it be within a couple of meetings, which has been the practice? That was really the question.
No, the, the question though, that I agendized for discussion is the motion I just made. If you, if there, if there's another motion for the city manager's question, I think that could be answered or I can amend it to add whether it can be done in the next two meetings. Um, but I think the question that I asked is really the gist of the topic.
I, I would suggest, through the mayor, I would suggest that you just simply amend your mo- motion to stay within the next couple of meetings.
Yep. I can say, yeah, to, to amend the motion within the next two meetings.
Sure.
Thank you. I, I think that's what, and that's what he was asking. So I want to give direction and that motion didn't answer that. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Um, um, and as indicated with the amendment by the Vice Mayor. And, um, seconded with the amendment by Councilmember Medina. Got all that right? Okay, good. Okay. Uh, go ahead, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Yep.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Okay, now we will move on to item two, request discussion and direction that the fall and spring flea market be in downtown San Bruno due to construction in City Park through two thousand twenty-three. Vice Mayor?
Great. Thank you. This is actually not my idea. This was, um, brought up to me by a number of, um, store owners downtown. Um, and it made a lot of sense. So I placed it on the agenda. Um, the city traditionally has two flea markets a year in San Bruno Park. Um, I've rented a space before. It's a really nice event, um, big turnout. And so because of the rack, um, being under construction, the suggestion was why not have those flea markets downtown? It, they would be planned anyway and have staff time anyway if it was in City Park. So, um, why not make the suggestion so that the community can still enjoy the flea market? We can get people downtown. Um, and just expressing this on behalf of some of the owners that, um, brought it to my attention. So that, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments from colleagues?
Through, uh, through the mayor, is there a thought of where specifically downtown? Would we do a street closure or?
Great question.
So there were, um, I think that could probably be up to staff, but, um, the suggestions that I received was that on Sunday mornings, the parking lots, um, are fairly closed. Um, I mean fairly empty, I should say, um, and so maybe in one or two of the parking lots. Uh, if not in the, with the street closure. So those are different options or variables.
Thank you. Sorry to jump ahead of you, uh, Councilmember Medina.
No, I saw, I thought I saw your, your real hand. Um, Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, um, there is an interest, um, in, in, in our downtown. And of course, we, we need to hear from our, our city manager about the effort it would take. I, I would definitely not close the street to do it. I think the parking lots is absolute, absolutely the right place. Um, because just it's too impactful to, to close, um, our downtown for that. And I think we've seen that there are costs associated with it. So, um, but I'm interested in hearing from our city manager. I think it's, it's, it's needed. I think people want to get out. Um, and everybody has a lot of stuff they would like to get rid of. I know we do in our little house. So, um, um, and what's really great about a parking lot is the stalls already defined, right? So it, it makes sense. And, and I, I'm, I'm, it sounds positive and I just want to hear specifics.
Well, I, I think what the city manager also indicated to us just in the last conversation was it was if there's a majority of the council that wants that to allow staff to come back and give us that information that off the cuff, it's very difficult. But I would, Councilmember Medina, agree in the element of, um, I think staff should have a uh, opportunity to look at, is it the parking lot, as you indicated, that is already marked, right? That doesn't block the businesses and the, some of the traffic and stuff. Um, and where do you block? And that takes more time and resources because now we have the safety element. And the control of the foot traffic and the auto traffic. And, but, but I spoke, uh, I, I spoke a little out of turn, um, City Manager, Rogan.
Sure, Mayor Medina, uh, you're exactly right. Uh, consistent with your draft policies and procedures that we'll be talking about, uh, it's important to, to just know, uh, uh, for the viewing public that, uh, city council members, uh, have the ability to put a comment on this, on the city council agenda. Uh, and by placing that comment on the city council agenda, uh, staff, uh, does not undertake the work to analyze the item. The item comes before, um, you as a body and so your colleague is bringing a idea to you. And then uh, if it is an idea that, uh, requires, uh, staff time, uh, staff, uh, if the majority of the council supports it, will go back and analyze it and return to council. And so that's what I understand this item to be. Uh, I will make some, uh, comments, which is we, staff, uh, absolutely understands that the city uh, council has the desire, uh, for more events downtown. Uh, that is absolutely a focus of the city. Uh, important to know that, uh, these, uh, flea markets that happen, uh, in City Parkway uh, are not and we're not in the city work program for this year. Uh, you, uh, you are aware that we did reduce our work program uh, for a number of reasons. Uh, uh, one of which, uh, your community services department right now is significantly focused on developing plans, uh, so that the rack opens successfully. Uh, and so the entire, uh, work program of programs that were put on, um, uh, in prior years, uh, are not happening. And so, uh, we know that, uh, as a part of your strategic initiative, you have, uh, for, uh, downtown events, uh, and we uh, had Community Day downtown. Uh, what I understand this to be is, uh, really tied to that strategic initiative request, but a request for a specific program. Uh, or a specific event to be run downtown. Uh, and so, um, uh, we can certainly, if directed by the city council, work with the staff to um, uh, analyze what adjustments to the work plan would be needed, uh, and, uh, return to the city council with uh, that information, you know, is it a program that we can potentially put on? I really don't want to say that on, on the fly. I think, you know, absolutely, um, things can be adjusted, but, um, it is not currently in the work program for staff, uh, and that's not to say that we can't add it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I think, um, if it's not in the plan for this year, then I think you've been planning it in the spring. Cause I want to say, I, I can't remember exactly what, what time in the fall the, um, flea market is. Um, but to plan it for the spring so that it is in the plan, uh, for next year and it doesn't get forgotten because it is an annual event, uh, both of them are annual events in San Bruno. And it would be preferable for them not to be taken off the work plan, just so that the community can continue to enjoy them. Um, so that would just be my, my comment because I didn't, I was not aware that they had been taken off of the schedule completely.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say, and again, obviously with the, um, uh, what's occurring in the city park, things have been modified or the staffing component, as we know. But the other thing too is if you want to talk about marked spaces and adequate parking and easy to get to and from and load and unload. There's a whole mall that, uh, we know there's a lot of space there too. So it's another part of San Bruno. So I think you know, staff should have that opportunity to broadly think what, what is best. But, um, thank you, City Manager, for bringing that up about the workload. Because again, we are, we're as a council admitting, I know we're, they're at their maximum, but then we ask. And we say, well, you know, so staff trying to balance and follow our direction. And I think we all have to be mindful of that together. Um, so with that, uh, where are we at on this topic then, uh, team?
So I would, I guess, I don't know, we just motion the mayor, um, I don't know, to ask staff to look into what the time constraint would be to, um, have this, that would be any different. Honestly, would just be what would be different than having it at City Park. Cause I, I don't think it would be fair to have a time for something that's already was, was gonna happen. Um,
So the motion is to have staff look into having a fall and spring flea market?
Or, or a spring flea market. I guess the motion would be to have staff let us know what the time commitment would be to pursue the regularly planned flea market events for the city of San Bruno.
Okay, so you're meaning fall and spring? I just want to make sure the motion is clear.
Well, it would be fall and spring if, because I don't have the previous, um, recreation guidebook. So I don't know if it would have already happened is my point. I'm just saying whatever the regularly planned, I, uh, schedule would be to follow the, what, you know, what that is. My recollection of the entire time I've lived in San Bruno is it's always the same months every year. So.
Uh, I, I can tell you, my memory is going that, um, because I think there's a crowded night because there's the movies in the park and there's the festival going on at the same time. And then there was sometimes the flea market that coincided, but then they tried to not do that because of the parking, uh, constraints. So I kind of remember that month as, um, it would be this month. Or very, or like the first week in October. So that's why I'm trying to, because, because uh, to me, it's, it's over for fall, but that's just my, my thought. Anyway, um, uh, uh, City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna, uh, help out and, uh, ask the motion. Uh, I think the most is to ask staff to look at, uh, transitioning the, uh, flea market events, uh, to downtown uh, for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Uh, and so, uh, with that, we can, uh, 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 what, what, work with staff to, to develop, um, an analysis of what that will take. Uh, again, the, a number of our programs have been modified because of the construction happening in City Park. This is one that was not planned. And so the request is essentially to, uh, uh, have the event this year, but have it, uh, at uh, in downtown. Uh, a number of locations have been talked about. We will, uh, look at those and return to the city council, uh, with, um, uh, a, essentially an impact analysis and, uh, an assessment on the, the city's ability to, uh, put on that event.
And I'm just going off memory, but I'm pretty sure about the September. I think it might've been July. And maybe around those months that happen in the calendar year at City Park. It's just off the top of what I'm believing. So anyway, with that said, um, Vice Mayor, if you want to make your motion, uh, and how you wish it, see if there's a second and a majority.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a motion to have staff provide, uh, with the, um, I guess what the staff resources would be to plan the regularly scheduled flea markets, um, in an alternate location, um, primarily looking at downtown.
I'll second that.
On the question, is that for this year, next year, or that's just whatever? So if September was the last one that's done, then we're talking twenty-two, three.
You're talking about twenty-two, three. Correct.
Okay, thank you. That helps, uh, clarity. Um, okay, thank you for the clarification. There's a motion and second, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes. And, and that again is to bring it back. This is not a, um, these votes are to bring back data for final decision. This is not the decision and that's how I'm voting. So if I'm incorrect, correct me now. So I can modify what I just did. Uh, item, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Salazar?
Uh, I, I just wanted to say, I, I, I don't want to come across as just being the emergence, and it's like these council comments have turned into, uh, this opportunity to reprogram, uh, what staff is doing, um, e- even when, when we get input from Um, e- even when when we get input from staff that they're already, uh, overwhelmed. And in this case, we're talking about bringing back something that, um, it it, uh. I I I imagine it was taken away during COVID because because of COVID, and there's a lot of programs that haven't come back yet. And so, um, that we're sort of having these conversations outside of the normal channels of when we talk about what's, what are we going to normally program? Doesn't seem appropriate to me, and I really don't think it's fair to staff that we keep adding more of these items. And so tha- that's really my reason for voting. No, I don't disagree that these are are, I I'm not disagreeing that these are good ideas. Uh, they're definitely good ideas. I just don't think that this is the way that we should be programming activities.
Uh, I thank you for your clarification to your voting, and if we can make it very quick, quick, Vice Mayor, so we can move on to the next topic. Thank you.
I can just move on to the next topic.
Okay, thanks. Um, item three, discussion. Oh, sorry, di- discussion of plan and process for incoming San Bruno funds, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so I wanted to agendize this because it's come up a couple of times, I think, from different, um, council members. Um, in particular by the mayor, um, as part of the reason for the no vote on the commercial transfer tax, um, under the charter city umbrella. And so, um, I guess we don't really need to take a vote on this. I just wanted to have a discussion, um, with council members. Around when they foresee this conversation happening. So is this something that we as a council would like to see, um, and talk about as part of a strategic initiative? Um, is it something that we should be, you know, having counsel with the city attorney? Um, is it something we should talk to the city manager about? I just wanted to have a discussion openly so we don't violate any Brown Act rules around what, uh, what is envisioned for this process.
Sorry, I had to take the mic back live. Uh, Councilmember Salazar?
Uh, a suggestion, and typically how it's happened in the past is once funds become, uh. Part of our general fund, you would during our budgeting cycle, uh, program those funds. Uh, and there, but of course, staff would have an opportunity then to look at what's, you know, what's coming in, which programs that they want to prioritize. And I know that there is some interest on some of the council members' part to, uh, prioritize some of those dollars in in different ways. But those conversations can still happen as part of of the budgeting process. And what what I want to, what I'm hoping we can avoid is making commitments, uh, on on money. That's forecasted to come in but has not yet been received, because that's, it's bitten us in the past. Where we assumed money was coming in, then it didn't. We had already allocated it. And then, uh, we have to make cuts, and that's always uncomfortable. And, uh, it's, uh, those conversations are never pleasant. So, um, I I would suggest that as the money comes in. Once it becomes part of the general fund, then it get programmed as part of either the the annual or mid-year budgeting process.
Uh, Councilman Medina?
Yes, um, so I know I. I think we should hear from the city manager, because I know I've asked this in my one-on-one meetings and kind of, when are we gonna start talking about these funds? So, um, maybe we should hear from the city manager, because I think he's. We we just have a lot of stuff to do and there's a lot of meetings and and it's like, okay, when is that gonna happen? So I believe it's gonna be happening, but exactly when, you know, it depends really on. When is the money gonna come in? And kind of like what Councilman Salazar mentioned, you know? Don't, don't count your chickens for you. They they hatch, right? We can't be. It's really hard to be patient on the council sometimes when you know that, you know, Christmas is maybe coming a little soon. And there's so many needs and we want to see those needs met. Our community wants to see a lot of gr- great things. And and so I'll stop and and wait for the city manager to chime in.
Uh, the city manager, uh, would you like to hear from Councilmember Hamilton first and maybe incorporate if there's more? Thanks. Councilmember Hamilton?
Sure, I mean, I had a similar comment to to Councilmember, um, Medina, uh, that, but. And and frankly, to the, the, some of what Councilmember, um, tells are said as well, I, you know, but my expectation was that. The, you know, as as these funds are coming in, that we would, that we would, um. Uh, have a meeting. I wouldn't necessarily want to wait till the full budget cycle to do it, to do it then, only because there's just so much. That's happening during that budget cycle. Um, you know, that, you know, maybe a a a conver- a separate conversation would be, um. Be more valuable. But again, I would prefer to to, I'm here with the city manager as to say before, um, going any further.
Okay, city manager, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Medina. Uh, so in response, uh, to the, to the discussion. Uh, absolutely, staff is planning, uh, to have a, uh. Discreet conversation and process with the city council around where to allocate, uh, uh. Uh, funds, uh, that are anticipated to be received, uh, from major development projects. Uh, that conference, this conversation is not a, uh, quick conversation, and it's actually a conversation that really needs to be underpinned and supported with. Significant analysis and and that work really will take months. Uh, and so we are into twenty-twenty-three before that work can be done. So you're really beginning with a full plate, uh, and a full complement of the financial, uh, needs of the organization. As well as the known facility challenges that we have. Uh, and we have some known unknowns, where we have things that we know we need to fix, but we actually don't know how much they're gonna cost. And so, uh, we want to take some time to actually, uh, put, uh, ballpark numbers on those. So you're really beginning with a full plate, uh, and so you can have a robust conversation. Uh, and and please know that staff will not, uh, enter this conversation, but here are staff's recommended, uh, list of where the money should be allocated. Absolutely not. Uh, and, uh, it will certainly be informed, uh, by, uh, council's direction. Uh, and, uh, we are, uh, working on a plan for that, uh, um, on our tickler file. Uh, and we talked about during the budgeting process, doing a municipal services review, uh, that, uh, is, uh, comprehensive, uh, and. We know that our needs far outstrip any funds that we're due to receive. And so, you know, if we're not careful, we can spend the money, uh, two or three times over, as well as spend it on X when Y was more important. Uh, and so we, we really want to take the time to support the city council so you can make informed decisions. And I I do, uh, believe that that conversation is certainly into twenty, uh, twenty-three. Um, but it is, um, likely before and, uh, but during our normal budget process. But but really a part, and and that those detailed conversations need to begin before you receive your recommended budget. Um, whi- which he typically receive in May. And so I I do see, uh, uh, latter part of Q, uh, Q one, Q two. Uh, for those conversations, uh, to to be happening with the city council of calendar year twenty-three.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Yeah, I I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mayor Medina, but I think it's not just the development fees. I think if I remember from the conversation from the mayor, it's really a, an overall review of everything coming in. So it's the Artichoke Joe's money, it's the T O T, it's the, um. If there's, if there's expected or anticipated cannabis, it's Walmart. And I'm not speaking for the mayor, but I I know that, um, you had said, like, what's all, what is, what are all the funds coming in, right? So we can take a look at them. And I know these conversations have been had in one way or the other with other council members. So, uh, uh, is the conversation gonna be specific to just development fees? Or is the council gonna be receiving in the public, right? An overall picture of what, uh, we're looking at, not, not just for the budget year, but. My, kind of more like a forecasting of the next five to ten years of what's anticipated. And that's, that's me speaking. So, but I'm trying to put together a hodgepodge of these mini conversations that that have been going on.
So, uh, to the mayor, in response to Vice, to Vice Mayor Mason's question. I really believe that it's important to segment the conversations, because Vice Mayor, you just mentioned a number of funding sources, some of which are. Uh, annual and ongoing. Uh, and so I do believe that it's important to segment the conversation. Uh, by one-time development-related revenue, uh, for, um, capital projects. Or other one-time expenditures from ongoing sources. And certainly, uh, when we discuss those ongoing sources and maybe even new ongoing sources like Artichoke Joe's. Uh, that is a discreet conversation, uh, because I know that the city council has articulated, uh, or members of the city council. Have articulated desires to have, uh, those funds potentially utilized for certain activities. But I really do think the conversation is bifurcated by the one-time development revenue, development-related revenues. Not just development impact fees, but community benefits, uh, properties that, uh, uh, the city is in the process of selling. Uh, as well as, uh, other, um, um, payments such as the authorized. Uh, agreement with the South Line Development in South San Francisco and their transportation improvement funds that, uh, are to be paid in twenty-three. And so, um, ongoing versus one-time essentially, uh, is is, I think, a conversation that we need to have.
Any other? Question, yeah, because it is too different, and I think the city manager said it well, one times are one times, and usually. Councils look at it, okay, what can we do this time? Because it's, once it's done, it's done. And then there's the reoccurring, which then gets budgeted. And then that's where it it all formulates, usually around budget time, but I will tell you, going to the session on deferred maintenance, which we have that. Um, the analytical review that a staff component did for the the presenters who were showing us was extremely detailed. And if you wait on this, what is the return on the investment, but what is the cost and what happens if it needs to be replaced? It it's, it's just not so simple as that. And so I think with the city manager and and team that are saying like, hey. We really need to look at it holistically and globally and find out where the needs are. And I do agree with Councilmember Salazar, because it has bit us to where we're gonna get these hundreds of thousands of dollars in permit fees. Guess what? They didn't come. And then guess what we had to do? How do we, wh- where do we trim it? So we can balance. So, um, I appreciate everybody's conversation. Um, as the Vice Mayor said, I guess there's not a a motion, but there was a discussion that I think the city manager might have formulated. Uh, Councilmember Medina?
And, uh, Mr. Mayor. We would have part of this discussion at our next quarterly update, right? When 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 staff comes back to us and tells us where we're at. And if there were any revenues that came in early or or whatever it was. That would probably be the best part to start, but the bigger conversation, that takes a lot more time for the analysis. Right?
Yeah, there's a quarter quarterly amendment, you're correct, on the pros, cons, or sh- shifting the budgetary items or asking for more.
Right, okay, all right. So, and that, the city manager can remind us that is in November?
Sure.
Uh, the quarter ends in September, then I would be probably be that next following month that we would have the meeting. I can't remember.
Sure, uh, uh, Councilmember Medina, uh, you're right, uh, the Q one financial update, uh, Q one runs. July, uh, August, September, it would normally be October that we would discuss the Q one financial update. Uh, I think I, as we've talked about with our, with our tickler file, uh, there are a number of, um. Special meetings and, uh, topics that are going on. And so, uh, there is currently not time during your regular session, uh, your regularly scheduled October meetings for the Q one financial update. And so staff will be pulling likely for a special meeting for the Q one update that may occur late October or just into November.
Okay, um, anything else on item three, Vice Mayor?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, let, we're gonna go to number four, discussion of Charter City next steps.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of go full circle on the Charter City. Um, at this point, it has not, uh, been approved to be on the ballot. So my question is, um, for the city manager, um, should this be a desire of a future council? Uh, what would be the next opportunity to place something like this on the ballot?
Sure. Uh, John Rogan, city manager, back of the lectern, um. Uh, in response to, um, Vice Mayor Mason's question. Uh, yes, you are correct that, uh, a majority of the city council, uh, provided direction. Uh, earlier this fiscal year for staff to work on a, uh, charter with, uh, with the integrated commercial property transfer tax. That was brought before the full city council with the draft charter, uh, because the charter included a, uh, tax measure. For a five council member, the super majority was required for that to move forward and be placed on the ballot. Uh, that was not supported by four or five council members. And so currently, staff, uh, does not have work on a city charter on their work plan. Um, should, uh, that, uh, ever be directed, we will certainly, uh, take direction from the city council. Uh, and so the city council, uh, I believe, um, this council or any future council. Uh, it would be most appropriate to direct that because it is a substantial amount of work. Um, maybe a little bit less now that we have a draft charter. Uh, but, uh, it should be done through your annual strategic initiative process. Uh, and, uh, a charter, um, certainly if it has an integral real property transfer tax or any tax measure. Uh, really needs to, uh, to go, uh, per state law on a general election, which happens, uh, every even year. So the next opportunity would be, uh, November twenty-four. That given the timeline, uh, for that work, I would say that. City council providing direction on work, additional work on a charter. Um, for the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, which begins July one, twenty-three. Uh, and runs through, uh, June thirty, twenty-four would be appropriate. Uh, similar to this year, it really is around, um. In the July, August timeframe, timeframe where we are required to submit ballot language to the county. Uh, and so, uh, we would have to do that early, uh, August of twenty-four. And so, um, providing clear direction, a far in advance of that, would, uh, would be preferable.
Okay, and and absent, I guess, one of the two no members changing a vote. That it's still gonna be unlikely, because you're still gonna need four votes. Is that correct? Right, and I only say that because those two seats are not up for election this season.
Any tax measure, uh, requires a super majority, uh, four or five council members to place on the ballot. Uh, and so, um, in response to your question, uh, certainly a majority of the city council can direct. Staff to, uh, work on an item, but when it comes time to make the decision to put it on the ballot. Uh, you will need four or five council members to vote in the affirmative to do so.
And does, does that mean that, uh, then if twenty-twenty-four, would that mean that it really wouldn't go into twenty-twenty-six? Then absent a a change of vote?
Uh, you can put it on, uh, every even year, uh, for a general election, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight. Uh, and thirty.
Okay, thank you. A lot of revenue lost there. Thank you. Thanks for that comment. Um, so unless the count, other council members have comments on that, I just have a quick, um, comment, just in general.
Any other comments from council before the Vice Mayor has your comment? Um, please go ahead.
So I just wanted to say that I attended the Tanfran Memorial opening, um, a couple of weeks ago. It was a, um, late, I will say late, um, in typical style of myself. But by the time I showed up, it was actually a really beautiful unveiling. And, um, just, I think that everybody who worked on the event did a, a beautiful job and the statue is, um. The sculpture that was created is stunning and the names of everybody that, um, was detained is pretty remarkable. And when you actually see the amount of names, it's really sad to know that, um, similar things are happening in today's world. So, um, I think it's important to never forget those events, um, and the, the gallery, uh, at AZ Gallery also was hosting an event. And I walked in while they were being interviewed by one of the local news stations. Um, and I'm glad that they were highlighted because the artists that created, um, the art in the location were, um. Quite astounding, and I think that as people were going through the Tanfran Memorial opening, they were able to see both exhibits in Tanfran and out of Tanfran. So it was just a really nicely done. I don't know if everything was coordinated or not, but, um, I just want to thank everybody who worked, um, to make that a reality. And then just to, just to follow up on, um, Councilmember Salazar's comment. Um, as I understand it, this is the, this is the process that we all created to bring new ideas that are not necessarily strategic initiatives. Um, but things that the council may want to do mid-year or policy, um, options that may need to be more immediate than not. Um, I haven't heard any complaints about announcements. I haven't heard any complaints about announcements being placed on here. And as I understand it, those can just be verbally shared. So the purpose of these, as I understood it from our previous city attorney, was specifically to not violate any Brown Acts. Have discussions or make decisions to ask staff to look into certain items. And if the council doesn't agree to them, they don't have to agree to them. But there's really no other way as council members to initiate. New ideas, changing ideas, new policies, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you. There are other council members that wish to speak now would be the time to raise your hand because I'm going to see whose hands are up and then I'm going to finish off and adjourn. You know, I see, I see all three of the the hands, Mr. Medina. Councilmember Salazar.
I'll I'll just say that. Yes, there was concern initially that. There was no way to get things on the agenda. But I I would disagree that there are no other ways for us to discuss items, especially when they are. Work items that do come up throughout the year under different. You know, under different titles, but these things do come up. We do have an ability to discuss. You know, what what is being programmed and what staff is being asked to do aside from this. And this, it it just. To me, it doesn't seem like the appropriate way for an individual council member to try to push a single agenda item. And and in some cases, sort of either shaming or bullying the rest of us to follow along. By taking a vote and then saying, you're you're either going to support me or you're going to have to be. You know, taking a position against me. I I hate being in that position. Like I said, you bring a lot of good ideas forward. I just don't think this is the the right forum, and so I I can't support them. So. I I just wanted to add that.
Councilor Medina.
Yeah, so. I I just want to welcome Therapy Stores to our downtown. It's been a fantastic experience talking with the founder, Jing Chen. Her energy is highly contagious and she has plenty of great ideas. It's a it's a really unique shop, something that I haven't seen downtown. Combination of gifts, jewelry, clothing, accessories, beauty, wellness, kids. Really, really nicely laid out. It's located at five, five, six Sematel Avenue. And I'm also looking forward to two more stores opening soon, hopefully. The Chopsticker Lab Supermarket. The former Hanlin. Their website is active. It they they they're. They say there are one-stop shop with evolving variety, hot pot and barbecue items. And then there's a fabulosity. It looks like it's a antique store. There's a handwritten sign saying opening soon. So hopefully we'll see that. And come downtown. It's it's starting to get busy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton.
I just wanted to chime in on the on the the discussion about the the purpose of council comments and how to get things agendized. Just responding to you, to your your comment, Councilmember Salazar, the. Waiting for something to come on the agenda doesn't work when you want something new. And it's a it's a it's a a fact, a sad one, but it's still a fact that some folks think that everything's fine. And that we just continue on with the way that things have always been. And. And then if you want, if you want to make a change or something, you just wait for it to come up on the agenda. That's for for. For folks in the community who elected representatives to try to to. To bring some change, some needed change. Sometimes we need to, we need to put stuff on the agenda that's not going to be there. That's that's not going to come up in the normal course of business. And we need to to change the direction. We know we've been talking during our policies and procedures about what the what the the process is for. Settings to treat the where are the strategic initiatives and all of that. There are major flaws in that particular system. As we as we saw this this in this past year where, you know, that that particular session is was just rushed. And we didn't really have a chance to add anything new. And so, you know, I I I firmly believe that the methodology that we have in place here is absolutely sound. And as the vice mayor stated, if some if somebody brings forth a. An idea and and I don't agree with it, I'm going to vote no. And I'm not going to and I'm not going to feel bullied because I voted no. That's this, that's part of the job. So that's that's my two cents. Thank you.
Well, I have quite a bit to say on that, but you know, I'm going to not use council comments for that. All I will say is I think it can be refined. With that, I will say that I want to. Acknowledge that on the twenty-sixth, there was the police swearing-in ceremony at Skyline College, which I was. Privileged to speak and as some of us watched. They have already been serving, but to meet their families and have their badge pending and being sworn in. By our chief, Johansson. And as the vice mayor mentioned, agreed on the Tanfran Memorial. That was done. It was a beautiful day. I'm thankful for the tent they had. On that, and I was honored to be asked to speak. As the mayor of San Bruno, and I want to really acknowledge that committee who really did all the work. And raised the monies and made it happen. And it took some years. They got it done. And to see, meet and listen to those folks who actually were interned. There and other places there was very inspiring. And as Congresswoman Jackie Spears said, one thing she had spoken, she said. As Troop Seventy-two did the brought in the flags. And did the pledge that there they rose and over their heart with the allegiance to the flag. Even for what they have gone through. That to me is what it's about, and I was honored to be there. Obviously, on nine-nine was. Two nice things that, right? One nice thing, AYSO had their banner judging. Some of you were there. And then they had their parade. Some of us went over to Glenview and Earl where there was a. Reef laid. Thank you to staff for that, Jennifer Dianos. And also to police and fire for being there to assist me in laying that and having a moment of silence with the neighborhood. And then, of course. Had to make it back up to AYSO soccer at nine AM, as you know, for the start of season. Also, this weekend is the Saint Roberts Festival, which is back Friday, Saturday, Sunday, which has been in hiatus. For obvious reasons for the couple of years, like a lot of other things, a lot of effort, a lot of. Times being spent and hopefully it will be good weather and enjoyable time. Also, as a heads up, as Saint Roberts Men's Club president, we are sponsoring and is back. The car show at Saint Roberts on October seventh from five to nine. Which, as we may remember, was a fundraiser for the two families of the two gentlemen that were killed on Sneeve. However, that has been transformed into fundraisers for San Bruno communities. That will be occurring posted and we've secured everything at Rich McKenna. And we'll be heading that. And Alex Trolater was also a person. Who was very much actively involved in that. A lot happening in our city and obviously we're coming out of COVID, but still all be careful and take care of each other. And with that said, I appreciate staff and. Everybody for all of their time, their preparation and the meetings that we've had. And the good news is. We're going to adjourn at nine fifteen PM and we're going to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. We're going to pause in case I, city manager.
Sure, it looks like we have a member of the public that has their hand raised and I want to make sure we take public comment on the council comment section of the agenda.
Thank you. City manager, very much appreciate. I did not see that and I very much thank you. And I didn't put the other hand down, so I I didn't notice that one. Thank you. Thank you. Lupita, if you can assist me and. Bring in the the member of the public.
Okay, I will not be bringing in Robert Barnett. Mr. Barnett. I apologize, I'm having difficulties.
Are we okay now?
Yes.
Beautiful, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would like to, first of all, applaud. Mayor, Vice Mayor Mason for. Discussing and and questioning in regards to the Mills Park Park project. And the delays that I feel that they're not going to 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 get this off and running. Regardless of whether they have the money and the city can't tell them what to do. I believe that they need to attach.
Okay.
Some sort of penalties.
I'm sorry, I apologize, sir. I'm going to have to pause. The what we're opening on is comments from council members. You're speaking back to. The public hearing. So if there's items under council comments, that's what what is open at this time.
Okay, thank you and have a good night.
All right, thank you. Are there any other hands?
No other hands are raised.
Thank you. So we will go ahead and I will just announce it that we will adjourn to the next regular scheduled. Meeting, which will be held on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at seven PM. It is number three and thank you. Take care.